For any convenience. Okay, we're going live. Okay, good morning, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Monday, the twenty ninth day of November in the year two thousand and twenty one. This is an ad hoc committee meeting to investigate Suez water of the City of Jersey City Municipal Council. In effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities, the City of Jersey City has canceled all public meetings. And closed non-essential services as of March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty until further notice. As a result, this ad hoc committee meeting of the municipal council will be held virtually as a video conference with public access. We had a scheduled eleven AM start. The clock on my computer is showing eleven seventeen AM. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Counselperson Prinzieri.
Here.
Counselperson Bajiano.
Yeah.
Counselperson Solomon.
Here.
Counselperson LaBarro.
Here.
Counselperson Rivera is not here. Counsel President Wademan.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have five council members in attendance at eleven seventeen AM. In accordance with New Jersey Public Law nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one, the Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall. In addition, the notice of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Tuesday, November twenty third, two thousand and twenty one, at four PM to the Municipal Council, Mayor, Business Administrator, Corporation Council, and to the local newspapers and posted on the city's website. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Council President, we're going to turn it over to Chairperson, Counselperson Solomon, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So Counselperson Solomon, if you didn't hear before, Director Kiers is going to be a little late. He does have a meeting that should be ending soon. And I know we have representatives from, I know we have the Director Cunha from MUA, and we have Jason O'Brien from Suez. And I think he has a couple of members of his team here as well. So if you want to take it over, Counselperson Solomon.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, clerk, and hope everyone had a great holiday. I want to thank everyone for being here again. I thought we had a very positive conversation a week ago on emergency communications. For the council members who aren't here, we did take notes, so we'll send those around to who weren't there a week ago. We did take notes and we'll send those around. Director Kiers did follow up with his, some of the documents we had requested, which was great. And then we'll follow up with, I think, Suez on some of the documents we had requested a week ago. And distribute those to everyone on the committee. Today's conversation is focused on water distribution and specifically, you know, what happened in Ida that we want to correct and what are our plans moving forward? Were different types of events because obviously there may be different types of things. And we'll follow a similar structure as we did to the last meeting in which both MUA slash Suez sort of will go first. They'll answer some of the questions that we had put together and then Director Kiers as well. And then we'll open it up for each members of the committee to ask any questions that they have, you know, kind of we'll go person by person on this. So with that, you know, I think the core questions on water distribution was just very broadly, if you guys can give us an overview of your water distribution plans. What's the process if there is a water break? And what is the protocol for distribution? And then specifically around Ida, you know, what went well, what didn't went well, what changes do you plan on implementing specifically based on that? And then, you know, a secondary question is, is how do we very specifically target folks who need access to water, special populations? It might be seniors, it might be people with disabilities and things like that. So with that, why don't I turn it over to Director Kuna to start and then Director, when you're ready, you can turn it over to Suez.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning, council members and everyone else on the call. So real briefly and frankly, there is no specific water distribution plan aside from a boil water advisory requiring that people boil their water in order to get potable water. As regards supplementation of potable water, that's simply always been a courtesy when and if it occurs. And for the most part, it's been contained to water main breaks in specific areas only because the, they don't have access to water to even boil in those cases. So and again, those are usually concentrated. The largest one that I recall in the last two to three years since I've, actually two years since I've been with the MUA, was down on Merritt Street where Currys Woods was completely out of water. And we had a tanker set up there and folks were coming out with whatever containers they had. That was the best we could do there. We did also get some pallets provided gratis by Suez at that time. But boil water advisories, if I could just summarize, the last two years have probably been the only ones we've had in the recent decades, probably two decades, twenty years. And Suez can correct me when I pass it over to them. But we had three. We had one in April of two thousand and twenty, which was the one that was caused by the break in the eighteen sixty four water aqueduct on the west side along the Hackensack River during the Route Seven construction by George Harms. We did bring in some tankers for that. Suez can give you the number and the facts on that. It was nowhere near the response of Ida. Also, the second one was the boil water advisory due to E. coli last August. So that was two in one year. And there was some supplementation there as well. And of course, we all know the one due to Ida in, on September first, I believe it was, started of this year where we did attempt to, when I say we, it's MUA and Suez, did attempt to meet the potable water supplementation, including bottled water, which of course, we're all familiar with the challenges due to the availability and certain things that were promised and whatnot. So we're going to get into that. Obviously, we need to. And that leads to, that leads me to the transition to Suez here. I just wanted to make it clear, though, the boil water advisory type situation is very different because there will always be water available. Actually, not necessarily. Depending on how bad the break is, if it prompts us to have to put in a water advisory, there may not be water available. So that is, we almost have three separate situations that could possibly happen where we might want to consider some type of water supplementation. So let me just give you one quick takeaway, not to rush ahead. From my point of view, standing shoulder to shoulder with many of you council folks and talking to you all morning on that Thursday, September first or second. The bottled water is obviously great for sensitive populations, mainly the seniors, homeless shelters and whatnot. However, wherever we dropped water bottles, we could have dropped a trillion water bottles. They all would have disappeared within minutes. It seemed like it was a never ending river of bottles needed to the point where the initial holdback on pallets or troubles that we had that morning finally caught up to us Friday night and then Saturday when Suez got the larger shipments in. And somehow those all disappeared as well, even though we had significantly cut back the distribution of them. So, you know, the aided distribution, meaning JCMUA aiding Suez. So I think that we need to be very, very careful. That is a slippery slope. That is definitely a lesson learned. Council President, I remember standing right next to you right at the annex Friday evening and us looking at each other and saying, we can't do this with the water bottles again. So Nadine Leslie, the CEO of Suez North America, had already promised us previously in our response meeting to the open council that Suez was going to purchase, if they haven't already, dedicated water buffaloes for each ward. I don't recall the number, but I think we stick with that, though the history has shown that when we set up the mass bulk water, where you bring a container to get water to supplement your boil water, the usage is extremely low citywide. So again, boiling water seems to still be the best, most reliable way to supplement water. I'm not saying we can't and we shouldn't come up with something in writing that we all agree to and respond to in quick action for a future event. But again, we have three separate types of events that could happen, so we're going to have to work together to break that down. If I could pass this over to Suez just to supplement anything I may have missed or correct anything that I may have been incorrect on.
Thanks, Joe. Jason O'Brien from Suez. Hope everybody had a good holiday weekend. Glad to be with the council here today to discuss this. I think Joe really covered, you know, most of it. I think the one thing, just to add, which I think everybody here knows is with, with the Hurricane Ida event, it was more of a region, regional wide event throughout the state and even outside of the state of New Jersey. So it became, you know, much more complicated and difficult to get the resources with the first two instances back in April and August of last year, where we provided bulk water, you know, we were able to get multiple tankers in the city easily available. Here, with Hurricane Ida and resources being, you know, pulled throughout all locations, it became much more complicated to bring, you know, bottled water and bulk water in. We could only actually get one tanker truck to mobilize. And that's why we set up the buffaloes in the wards. I do think Joe's correct. You know, I did do a, you know, an incident review briefing after this. And we really don't have a defined plan associated with providing potable water if there is a boil water advisory event. And I do think it's, you know, a workshop, you know, to go over different scenarios, you know, where we would, you know, potentially bring bulk water or bottled water. I wholeheartedly agree with Joe that bottled water really should just be for the sensitive populations. As we brought it into areas throughout the city, it disappeared as soon as we, you know, put it down. And I do think, you know, coming up with a plan and adding this into our emergency response plan for all different types of scenarios is the, is the way to go.
Great. Thank you, Jason. One is a quick note. Clerk, could you just let me know when Director Kiers is on? Just want to make sure I'm aware.
I certainly will.
Thank you, clerk. Why don't we do, Jason, is there anything else you want to add at the initial outset?
You know, just the other thing is, you know, on our part for Suez, you know, we're really more focused on fixing the problem, right? Trying to get it so we can lift the boil water advisory as quickly as possible. We're putting all of our resources, you know, towards that. So when it gets into, you know, maneuvering bottled water, you know, around the city, that became, you know, much more difficult. We're also trying to address the problem to lift the boil water advisory too at the same time.
That makes sense. And thinking through how to address that in the emergency operations plan, I think it makes sense. Then why don't we do this? Why don't we open it up for questions from all of the council members and go from there? So I'll start with Council President. Do you have any?
Yeah, let me ask a question because when it came to the bottled water, because I was going to different sites that was, you know, the locations. Was there a way to say at what site the water was eliminated very quickly? The reason why I'm saying that, because when I went to Newark Avenue, they was just asking people to just come get the water. Because they really, there was nobody there waiting to get water. Like people was just walking by and they were just asking people to come just, just take the water. So I, I, I'm wondering, is there or, you know, there should be a way to say, okay, we at Site A and we're distributing bottled water, but Site A really doesn't need it. So maybe we need to stop at Site A and go to Site C, which really does need it. Because even when I went to the Heights at a certain point, they were asking people that were walking by to come get the water. The people really didn't need the water. They weren't conscious, they didn't need it. But when I was in Ward F, that's where the water was needed. And when I was in Ward A and I stopped by Ward B in Lincoln Park, water was needed there, but there wasn't, there wasn't much water there. But in those other two sites, there were plenty of water. Then I came down to the pedestrian plaza and it was cases by the afternoon. It was nothing but cases. So is there a way to say what site really needs it, even though, you know, you distributed at six sites? Okay, then you found out at Site A, we really don't need it. So why can't we just pretty much, okay, take half of that from Site A and just give it to Site C? There was no way of transporting or even knowing that Site A is really not effective. I went around.
Yeah, Council President, you're one hundred percent correct. So that's one of the lessons learned and one of the main reasons why I'm really pushing for bottled water at general delivery sites is definitely not the way to go. That's one of the main takeaways that I can take away from this event. Once we realized, and we tried to have each location staffed as much as possible, but there were locations, Newark Avenue, you hit it right on the head, where for some reason there was a breakdown between us and Suez resource wise, because we had to split the stationing or, or we hit a, I don't know, a staffing switch over time where something cracks. And that's when we would deploy whatever truck was available to go pick up those pallets, which now is a problem because the pallets are usually loaded by a forklift, which was great that we had a volunteer offer us their forklift all day long at the Ward F site at the annex. Otherwise, DPW is definitely the place to stage this from. That's one of the number one recommendations, I'd say. I think it worked really well. Once we were able to receive the large tractor trailers, we were able to deliver, you know, we were able to deploy properly. You know, we follow kind of almost like a deployment like we would with plowing. And we all know how efficient we work with that. So if we could just stay in that same vein and go that way, I agree. And again, for the sensitive populations that we agree, I think we should agree on a volume per location based on the unit. Figure out the staffing needed. Once we have that in writing added to the ERP, I think we're going to be on our way here. To have this not happen again.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Bajiano.
Yeah, I don't know what they're talking about, about Newark Avenue, because I was on Newark Avenue. We went through three pallets. We had the truck there. I have pictures of them handing cases off of the truck. We went through tons of.
Talking about downtown at the pedestrian plaza.
Oh, okay. All right.
No, 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 Rich, I did go by there. When I was there, you wasn't there. And that what was going on. That's my whole point. There's nobody there to say, okay, we don't need anymore. You know what I'm saying? That's my point. I was there. I'm not, I was there.
Yes, if I may just clarify, there was one point late in the, late in the afternoon around four o'clock or so, up right by the courthouse where there was two pallets. But unfortunately, neither Suez nor MUA had had a person there within that hour. And people were afraid. They didn't want to touch them. They were just walking by them and looking at them. And I think at that point, you and I got on the phone and I think Horton, I think Peter Horton came by and started ripping them down and handing them out. I don't know if you remember that.
That's right.
That's right. It was, it was a small amount of time, but Council President, unfortunately, I think that's exactly when you went there.
Yeah, because I was there and Peter went up on the truck and handed them out. We had left. We had to go to another site. We came back. There was nobody there. And Peter got up on the truck and I have all pictures of him handing down cases of, and bottles of water. So.
Councilman Bajiano, do you have more questions?
No, no.
All right.
As far as I'm concerned, on Newark Avenue, they did a good job.
So this is Councilwoman Prinzieri. Do you mind if I jump in?
Go ahead.
So, so a couple of things. I, I understand that there were issues with the deployment of water. But this kind of goes back to the issues from our lack of communication, right? Like we were told that water was going to be here by nine AM. Then we found out that we were basically, you know, I'll just say it, second class citizens to Hoboken because they got their water first. Then when it came to the deployment on site, because I was at Lincoln Park at nine, I came back at nine thirty. And then I stuck around until ten o'clock when they finally started to show up. We had no idea what was coming. We had residents that were in line waiting for bottled water because that's what was told to them. They were not told, bring containers. They were told water would be available on site. I was, I worked with you all when we had the water main break over at the construction site on Route Seven. We, residents were told, water tankers were coming, bring receptacles. That was fine. People knew what to expect. People knew where to show up. People knew what they needed to get the water for the, because there was no water. And so I think that while we appreciate that you guys had offered the bottled water, if you can't deliver, don't deliver. I think that also, did you guys maybe in future explore a voucher system for our local businesses to go into them to give a resident a voucher for a case of water? They get a case of water from their local grocery store, their local, you know, market. So the onus is not on Suez directly to, if you guys don't have forklifts and if you guys don't have the material or the resources to do that kind of delivery. I think that the biggest complaint was the lack of communication around that. So I think that, you know, when these events happen, like this, this goes back again to the last meeting. This is what, if people know what to expect, they will come prepared. And, and then on top of that, there were no employees in Lincoln Park. You had the person from Suez show up, drop off the water and leave. If I had not been there, if Danny from the MUA had not been there, it would have been a free for all. People would not have known what to expect. And there probably would have been fights because people were very angry that they didn't know what they were going to get. And what they thought they were going to get was not what they were getting. I had people and seniors go home to get cases or containers to bring back water. I also had people show up and said, well, my mom is elderly and I'm picking this up for her. So they were, they were trying to get additional cases. And I, and I agree that, you know, to Joe Cunha's point, sensitive populations should have priority. And that, you know, moving forward, we should figure out how to, how to best service them. But like that was another thing, but that also comes down to the fact that like, if, if we hadn't been there, the cases would have been gone in five minutes. Because people would have just taken what they wanted to take and left. And so I think that, that it's, I understand your point, fixing the water main break is priority, but, but all of this needs to be communicated at. Because as council people, we're on the front lines, we get the phone calls. And if we don't have the information, we cannot impart it to the residents. And that is, you know, this is, this is more comment than question. But, but that's, you know, it's like, also, it's, when it came to the staffing issues, how did you guys prioritize? Because it seemed like each location got different priority and there was no internal communication. And I don't, you know, and not say that you guys didn't have that, but, but on the outside looking in, it seemed like there was no internal communication.
Would you like me to respond to that? I'm not sure.
Yeah. Communication piece, and then the rest of it obviously is going to be worked out as we all work together to create a better emergency plan. But, but specifically the internal communication and why, you know, there was, there was no communication outside of what was going on on social media. And even that was like not great communication.
Yeah, there is no doubt that the communication needed to improve from this last event when it came to the potable water, whether bottled water or the bulk, you know, locations that we had. We, we were, it was difficult because we were relying on a third party vendor to bring us the, you know, the water when they said that they would be there. It's not something that we just keep on stock for like a citywide boil water advisory. We normally will have some pallets of water available for certain things that come up, but not when there's a system wide event. That was the times that we were given that they would, they would be there. So that's the information that we got out to the public. Unfortunately, they weren't able to deliver, you know, on time. And, and to be honest, it's, we're just, we weren't prepared. We, you know, we weren't ready to distribute bottled water throughout the whole city. You know, we don't, we brought in extra staff. It was like a newer ask for bottled water throughout the whole city. And it was very difficult for us to do, you know, we, I think the, the MUA helped us out a ton there. But, you know, when we brought in the bulk tankers to locations, it's much easier to bring those in. And those are actually being, you know, manned and managed mostly by the third party vendor that brings those into the city.
Yeah, if I could.
We're not just, we're not, we're not manned to, to provide bottled water throughout the whole city. And it showed when, when we were asked to bring it in.
Sorry. If I could just, no, that's okay. The, the only, the only takeaway that matters, I think the most is overpromising and underdelivering can never happen again. That's, that's number one, right? Number two is, we ensure that by agreeing in this committee through an actual ERP addition procedure, NSOP to be inserted into the ERP for each of the three, if not other types of situations. And we're committed to that. But I do strongly stand behind, because a lot of the problems that we're mentioning and the reason why everything became a fire drill, to Councilwoman Prinzieri's point. Once we missed the initial timeline, it was literally putting out fires. Communication was not efficient, though my phone literally had to be charged twice throughout the day. And I have a battery backup too. So it was essentially like four charges because I just couldn't, I couldn't put it down. But that's neither here nor there at this point. But that's exactly what it became was a fire drill. We can't ever be caught in that situation again. I really believe that the bottled water at the street corners is the root of all evil here. And also, social media, we definitely put out, just to correct one thing, Councilwoman, we definitely put out bottles and tankers. But nobody read the tankers part because I think bottles was in there first. And once they heard bottles, nobody wants tankers. It's way too much work. So we shouldn't compete with ourselves when it comes to that. Sensitive populations, totally different story.
All right, Councilman Prinzieri, want to give you a chance for follow ups or other questions?
No, I mean, I think that. I, no, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, great. Councilman LaBarro.
I have no comments or questions.
No comments or questions. Okay, great. So a couple of just follow ups. I agree with Councilman Prinzieri said there. And the key being, you know, to, you know, only communicate what we can deliver. And I understand this was a new ask and there are third parties and all kinds involved. But I, you know, and I think, I think we're all in agreement that, you know, we have to know what we're, what is ours, the city and MUA's expectation in these events, and then to communicate that. Very specifically on this sort of sensitive populations, you know, what, right now, from, from your perspective, Director Cunha and Jason, it's Suez. What's our best process for us as council people to give you lists of, you know, each of the locations in our wards that we know has sensitive populations? You know, how, how do you think we reach the people who aren't in a specific building but are in the community at large? You know, I want to ask you, get your thoughts on how we develop and build this outreach list so that we are, you know, effectively delivering potable water to sensitive populations where the boiling water becomes more difficult for them.
So if I could just take this really quick and then I'll pass it on to Jason. One of the key takeaways to that end specifically with that response is, once we establish exactly the rendezvous point, which I believe is def- definitely going to be DPW, we can get lists of what you all deem in your individual wards and the at-large folks can confirm or add the sensitive populations. Right now, the only ones I could think of are the, the ones with high volume senior populations and homeless type shelters, things of that nature. And at that point, we can then decide on a volume and work backwards from that because the volume is going to be the key. Depending on what the volume is that we have to quote unquote design for is what's going to be, is what's going to determine the resources, the folks, the deployment, the forklifts, the trucks, things of that nature. And from there, we can build a detailed plan uh and have that ready at all times. Uh one of the things M U A is working towards is having supplementary contracts in place ahead of time uh for those bottled water um supplies. Obviously, if we hit something like uh supply chain issues like we did this time, that all bets could be off, but uh I did get reports that certain local uh businesses uh did have supplies. We just weren't tapping them. You know, Suez kind of took the lead on that. But uh the Department of Health did pitch in with an open contract and went right to Tropicana. Those were the first cases, first pallets that we did receive. I believe there was thirteen. Uh so, so that's something we're going to commit to. Uh getting it in a contract form where they can guarantee us a certain amount of water. But again, it all starts with uh your wish lists, if you will, or your your dire, dire needs lists. And uh we negotiate a final list amongst all of them by ward and then I could accurately work with Suez to uh put together our resources, staff wise, materials wise, uh equipment wise. And uh then rendezvous back with Greg Kears and you know, literally walk back from the endpoint, which starts with you telling us the locations and how many units, all the way back to the first delivery of pallets and how many pallets we need. So if I could get that from you for, for uh the immediate future, that would be great. And then uh we could start the process there. Maybe we set up a, uh not a Google group, but like an email uh open communication forum where we can go back and forth, maybe. I, I don't know if that's opening a can of worms, but it seems to be uh it seems to be a possible issue with the um sunshine laws. So maybe there's a council um liaison that can kind of help disseminate the information. The other thing is the property managers at each of those developments, especially the senior ones, were, were absolutely instrumental in getting the word out and helping us distribute, you know, getting some volunteers on site. That helped uh that helped lessen the burden significantly. So um that's somebody that I think we need to pull into the fold. Probably in step two, once we get the list of all the locations.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Um do we have at this point a definition for sensitive populations?
Good point. I don't believe we do. Right now, I'm just using the uh, I call them senior development and um but uh.
We do, we do have a um, a definition that we can provide you. It actually comes from the D E P. The D E P is also uh concerned about the communication of a boil water advisory. So they always ask us to make sure that are the sensitive population list is going out, you know, appropriately. So we actually have some sensitive population list um we can share um with the city as well. And then we can build off of that um for, for um potential bottled water locations.
Yeah, that, that'd be great. Glad, Joe.
Sorry, I appreciate that, Jason. That's a good start. The, I just want to make it clear that obviously our definition for this roof of sensitive population is likely going to be above and beyond that, that the uh D E P and E P A require. So I just want to make that clear. So you know, feel free to uh you know, use your own judgment on that. On what you provide us as a starting list um for a supplementary list in addition to what Jason's going to provide. So Jason, maybe you can start. Or maybe somebody can volunteer to set up a communications ring or something. So I don't know. I don't know how.
We, we can take the lead on starting the communications and we'll, we'll talk to Clark and make sure we're not, you know, doing anything that violates the sunshine laws. Um what, what I'd envision doing here in this case is, you know, if, if we could, uh, uh, maybe as I was asking is, you know, how long do you think it'll take for Suez M U A to work and, you know, with Director Kierstor got uh this type of a plan? Uh because maybe what I'd like to think of through us doing here is us getting you the information that you need as the council, then giving you a month, you know, so to speak, month, six weeks to build the plan out and then being able to, you know, provide a draft to the committee and then we can provide some feedback.
Uh from my point of view, that sounds perfect, actually, just because of the holidays coming up. I figure two meetings, maybe three uh with us, Suez and D P W. And I think we can hammer out a one or two page, eight and a half by eleven sheet of key uh response procedures to meet everyone's needs. Once we've compiled and populated the lists of locations and, you know, defined, essentially defined our own definition of sensitive populations.
Great. Uh that works on my end. So one additional question I had, and I know Director Kierst I don't believe is here yet. So question for him too, what, but I just want to ask for, at least for you guys right now, what, what happens if we're in the case of a, you know, uh let's say that Hurricane Ida not just, you know, disrupted the water supply, but people had lost power. Or even, you know, due to the flooding, people's boilers were out, so boiling water was impossible for them. You know, and, and what do we, or how, how do we respond if, if the sort of uh you know, emergency ends up affecting both water and electricity and heating sources? And so boiling water becomes more difficult for a larger portion of the population.
Before you answer that, Director, uh I just wanted to let Councilperson Solomon know that Director Kiers is on the meeting now, just so you're aware, okay?
Good morning, all. I apologize for my delay. I was at a meeting in City Hall. It just broke up. Um, Councilman, to your point, uh this is something we accomplished back during twenty uh, the hurricane Sandy. Um obviously, the city was significantly impacted. Uh power outages and things of that nature. We, we opened up our shelters. Unfortunately, one or two of the shelters uh had issues also as a result of the floods. And we moved a significant amount of folks, over twenty-five hundred into the National Guard Armory. Uh and we maintained that position for us five days. Um in addition to other challenges we faced up there, it does not have an emergency generator. We have the generator that was able to supply the building and we utilized the assistance of one of the local electrical contractors who set it up. What you're looking, talking about is, is mass, mass scale. And in an event like that, there's other assets that would come into play. Uh obviously, it would be during a state of emergency for something like that, which is uh kind of uh ramps up uh responses from both the state and the federal side. So um we proved in the past uh that we could successfully shelter a, a large amount of people. The electrical problem is, is a problem. Obviously, you know, we're nobody, no city is prepared to provide emergency electric uh should systems go down. And, you know, I think public service has worked to um improve some of it. I, I don't know whether it's the entire grid is improved. I know we deal with issues down at Public Works coming off the Garfield Avenue substation. Um so we're actually doing some research to up, update emergency generation down at Public Works. So uh we also did some uh able to secure some federal money through the Wasi grant that we um targeted our locations, police and fire facilities that didn't have emergency power. We put the transfer switches in uh there and we have portable generators that we can uh, you know, keep those oper- keep those operational. But a, a large scale event, we've already proven that we can operate under those conditions. And there again, it is, there's uh plans in place both on the state and the federal level that would uh provide assets that are, on our request.
Great. Thank, that helps just me understand that the basis of that situation. Um and then on the, on the flip side, I would ask you know, for that water main break situation.
I was looking for one that says something about FEMA training.
There is standard operating procedure. Obviously, we're talking about a smaller population size at that point, but you know, is it, you know, is most.
Is there anything that?
Break that is of um, you know, more than a, a certain period of time and more than a number of customers that, you know, water truck is automatically deployed or pallets are automatically deployed. Just is there a, you know, clear pot set of policies for that situation?
Is that for me, Councilman? You were bringing up, but I got.
Sure, that, that was more for, for um Director Kuna and Jason at, at Suez uh in that discuss if there, what, what we do in a water main break situation.
So uh, Councilman, that's uh, that's exactly to, to, to the point that we need to needle this down a bit.
Sure.
Uh and by, by situation, for example, you know, uh a water main break is the most common occurrence that we would actually uh get in an emergency situation. And Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but uh especially this time of year, and you'll notice in January and February, we get them every day at that point. Luckily, it's the oldest, smallest mains, six inch and eight inch, which don't uh really uh take longer than a day or two to uh max to fix. Uh from our standpoint, I believe it takes at least twenty-four hours to make sure that we meet the uh minimum standards required by the D E P to disinfect the tanker, fill it up and deploy it and start distributing water. Again, the bottles is going to have to be determined as to whether the proximity or the affected uh residents, which is quickly determined by Suez, by the way, uh within a matter of minutes. How many customers affected and what addresses they are and what hydrants and whatnot. Uh so we'll easily be able to tell who, how much bottled water we would need uh for sensitive populations. But again, bottled water and any water supplementation is usually when there's something on a larger scale, more than uh two day duration or that we think it's going to be more than a two day duration just to assist because again, they don't have water in that situation. So um you know, two day, two day actually sounds, now that I say it out loud, two day sounds like a lot to go without water. Uh so I think we're going to have to really talk about that. Again, uh in our little breakout group, Suez, J C M U A and uh D P W slash O E M uh in the two to three meetings that we'll have over the next six weeks, I think we'll be able to bring something forward in a draft form before the six weeks to you all and be able to tweak it. Uh open line of communication would be best, but uh those are my thoughts as of right now. Um Suez currently triggers a social media notification that a hundred customers affected. I don't believe there is a estimated period of time that water is down or an emergency would last uh that triggers that. I believe it's just immediately based on how many customers are immediately affected. So these are some of the things that we're going to have to, you know, really drill down and pinpoint. And again, we may, we may have to correct it in the future, right? This is going to be a living document, I think, uh that we're going to have to address periodically and fix as we go along. We can only try to forecast what we know at this time. And uh lessons learned are hopefully minimal. And, but they will need to inform the future uh amendments.
I, I mean, from my perspective, it feels like we, you know, have a reasonable understanding of what, you know, didn't work and, you know, the next steps are really to actually, you know, put pen to paper and create that plan that the director's saying and, and where, you know, you guys, you know, whatever information you need from us, we'll provide. You guys, you know, do, do the work to put it together and then we'll be able to come back, you know, after the new year and review it and try to you know, put it together and, and make sure that it, it fits and works. Um but I, I sort of agree with, with what we've talked about in terms of just really nary, n- nailing down the details and the communications and, and what the triggers are.
And just, uh this is Councilwoman Prinsari again, just, just one um comment um to Director Kiers's point during Sandy, uh what happened throughout the city and throughout the wards with um, you know, generators for people to have stations and locations where people can pick up ice and the like was a really great plan. And I've utilized that when we had power outages throughout my ward. So using that as a template might be a really great um move for you guys moving forward with these water issues because that um it wasn't perfect, but it worked really, really well.
Could I, could I ask um Director Kiers a question? Do you hear me, Director? Um in two thousand and thirteen, when I remember when I first took office, I, I, I believe the O E M used to offer a training for uh emergencies. Do, do you guys still offer that? Because I know I took the class and I, and I had to take a test and, and when we passed, we got a uh certified, like a certificate. But what it did, it lets you know the whole process if there's ever an emergency in the city. Like, you know, where the uh gathering site was, who was in charge, you know, that whole process. Do you remember that?
You referred to the CERT program, uh Council President, Community Emergency Response Team. Unfortunately, it was a victim of COVID. Uh the in-house classes were suspended. Uh the trainer at the ha- time that we had um attempted to do virtual classes. However, um they never really took off. Um and so we still have funding in place for it. Um it, obviously, we'd have to obtain the services of a new vendor. We actually tried to go out for bid on it and unfortunately, um as opposed to having one person conducting classes and running the program, we were getting uh bids from vendors who wanted to come in and do one or two uh programs and instructor, which really isn't. You need somebody to come in and actually manage the entire team. Um it was a valuable team. Uh COVID really kind of um, you know, impacted it because we couldn't get any training sessions. And by the way, this is, this was something that was initiated uh by the state and statewide, the um, it's, it's kind of been on hold simply because of uh, you know, COVID issues. But moving forward, uh it's something we can definitely try and bring on. The big problem we've had is, is getting a certified trainer in to do it. Paul Barrero, who I believe was probably your instructor when uh you took it, um did a great job. He's a retired battalion chief and uh really, you know, took it on to its own and turned it into a great program. I started it actually back in, I guess, twenty-ten. And we had a couple hundred uh trained volunteers and we did a lot of the city workers. We did a lot of the uh private entity workers, you know, where uh, where, where they were requesting same type of training to get into frozen zones. You know, should we have to shut areas down? We wanted, some people have a semblance of knowledge of the incident command system. They're also, you know, what occurs and why it occurs. But that's something we can definitely look at, uh Council.
Yeah, that was a good program. It was because it, it helped me out a lot just to know the process and whenever, ever is the state of emergency, where the location to go to. And once you get there, you know who's in charge. It, it was really good.
Yeah, we did a lot of drills around the state. We had a pretty robust team. As I say, losing Paul at the time was, we bought him back for a period of time. Uh however, we couldn't attract the folks that we were hoping to attract because I think a lot of it was based on the virtual training. They wanted the hands-on stuff, which is a lot more um, you know, it, it's a lot more practical.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any um for the council colleagues, any, any other questions, issues you wanted to bring up? Sounds like we're great. Um a- anything else from M U A Director Kiers or Suez that you guys wanted to bring up for water distribution discussion?
Uh one thing was mentioned, Councilman, and it was regarding the tankers and, and we participate, Chief Daly from my office from the fire side um is actually rebuilt the tanker task force that's used uh in the state of New Jersey, specific to the Uasi counties. Um the problem is, and Joe had touched on, on this before, the primary use of those tankers is for firefighting. So they are ready to go with non-potable water. So it does take time to, you know, have that water drained and cleaned. So there is somewhat of a delay. We, we've had issues here and we've had water main breaks in the past, specific in the downtown area. Um I believe the ones we had on Washington Boulevard and obviously fighting high-rise fires is a big concern. So you may have seen uh tanker trucks staged from out of town departments. Um and it does work. The unfortunate part about it, it takes some time to get it up and running. Um and the other thing is, is that, you know, i- if you were to have a large scale event, uh another hurricane, Sandy or something like that, that's impacting the state. Um the resources first have to remain, and this is a state plan, remain within their county and then as they're freed up, they're allowed to leave the county. So um Hudson County has a few tankers. We have one. Um but the big problem is you have to have a capability to store, especially in the winter months, they have to be stored within the firehouse if there's water in them because if they freeze, they're useless. So um i- is there a possibility of using potable water? There is, but it, it's time consuming.
And what's the, you have a sense of the, a rough sense of that timeframe to, to be able to drain the tankers and get them ready?
Well, the tankers itself is, uh we have, I believe, uh the one we have is thirty-five hundred gallons. Um, you know, it, it contained, you have to, they, they basically, the, the way they clean them out is with bleach. Um they're maintained, I believe, every three months. They run them through a cycle. So, you know, it's, it's, ours could be deployed relatively quick. Uh but if you're bringing in a number of vehicles for a large scale event, uh you're talking a minimum of, I would say, four, maybe six hours, especially if they're coming from out of county. And the one thing you always have to take into consideration is that if it's a large scale event that's impacting the state, then the state Office of Emergency Management kicks in once a governor declares a statewide and they pretty much are the folks that will deploy the assets as necessary. So they do an evaluation based on population, bottle, bottle. So they do an evaluation based on population, vulnerability populations and things like that. And uh, you know, that's how they would set that up. And there again, if there's also a situation where they require a certain amount for firefighting capabilities. That would diminish the amount of trucks that could be used for potable water.
Right, makes sense. All righty, any, any, any other final thoughts? All right, I think, thank everybody for their time today. Uh, we'll do a couple of quick follow ups, both from just documented requests from the last meeting. Um, and then some of the information requests that Director Kuna and, and we were discussing. So Director, I'll, I'll go directly to you, just you and I initially, and then we'll, everybody on the council, uh, you know, per the sunshine laws. Uh, and then we have our meeting next week. And that's to discuss, you know, broader questions around infrastructure and, you know, whether any legislation might be, um, you know. Needed or, or required uh for that. So we'll plan on having a meeting in a week and we'll send out the agenda uh for that midweek. So with that, uh, I think we'll turn it over to the clerk.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn at twelve oh seven P M?
A motion?
Motion made by Councilperson Solomon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Waterman. All council members present, by acclamation, please say aye.
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 Adjourn at twelve oh seven P M. Thank you so much, everyone. Uh, thank you so much for all the participants and everybody who participated today. I appreciate your um, your patience on getting started. Um, and in the future, we'll have that link up and running. Uh, as always, teamwork makes the dream work. Um, I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving and looking forward to the rest of the holidays. With that being said, everybody stay safe, have a great rest of the afternoon and I'll see the rest of the council a little later on tonight.
Take care.
Thank you, have a good day.
Bye-bye, have a good day.
Bye.